Good morning. It is now nine o'clock and I ask that you will please join me in an invocation and then please stand afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day. We just ask for your continued wisdom and guidance and all that we as the Board of Commissioners do in this day and thank you as well for the staff that is prepared for this day. We ask again that we just continue to serve to the will of our, your people here in Henry County and that again, as we enter into this Christmas season, that we just request blessings upon this county and every household. And for this and all things, I pray this in Jesus' name and all that agree, please say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now hereby call the meeting for today, Tuesday, December the 5th, to order for the Board of Commissioners. And at this time, we're going to recognize, do a staff recognition for Parks and Recreation and we ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to please come forward.
Good morning, Chair Wood and Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, we are recognizing several employees with our Parks and Recreation Department who were recently honored at both the District Conference and the statewide Georgia Recreation and Park Association's Annual Conference. Under the leadership of Director Tim Coley, these Henry County Parks and Recreation staff members were recognized for their outstanding contributions in the field of Parks and Recreation. The department received four awards from the GRPA, which were presented either at the district event or during the GRPA's Annual Conference held the week of November 7th in Columbus, Georgia. The following employees were honored. Michelle Dunn, Accounts Administrator, received the GRPA Administrative Professional Award. Tina Fuze, our Summer Camp and After-School Enrichment Program Coordinator, received the Sixth District Program Professional Award. Brian Dixon, Superintendent of Cottonfields Golf Course, received the GRPA Sixth District Facilities and Grounds Professional Award. And our Therapeutic Recreation Division, under the leadership of Therapeutic Specialist Harry Nash, received the Training for Life Award Special Olympics of Georgia. This award, which is akin to an Agency of the Year Award, is shared by five therapeutic specialists, numerous volunteers, and more than 180 Special Olympic athletes. And we have several members of the Parks and Recreation Department with us this morning. Would you like to get a picture?
Yes.
Yes.
I want to just say thank you to all of the Parks and Rec Board members and congratulations today. You know, I visit a number of parks on a regular basis and, and I just want to say I appreciate your commitment. I appreciate your dedication towards our children and just want to say thank you again for everything. And thank you, Tina, for your after-school programs as well.
Very good. Are there other comments from the board? And we do congratulate you, so please join us for a picture. Yes. So we're now moving to the acceptance of the agenda. The county manager has requested that the following items be removed from the agenda. We have Item 6A from the Henry County Department of Transportation regarding the speed humps and the ivies and the harbors at West Ridge subdivisions. And we also will be removing Items 10A, B, and C regarding the airport items that were listed and also 15A regarding the public information executive session. So at this time, are there any other questions? There also would be no need for an executive session today. So at this time, are there any other revisions or updates to the agenda? Hearing none, we call for a motion.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is accepted as amended. We'll now move into the following consent items that are part of our consent agenda. We have a resolution from the Henry County Police Department requesting acceptance of a donation in the amount of $2,356.77 from Get Set Growth. We have a SPOS resolution authorizing the chair to execute all necessary documents for conveyance of fixed assets relating to the water line and compact fire line extension at Fire Station Number 14 to the Henry County Water Authority. We have a resolution from the Building and Plan Review approving a request for the addition of two streetlights to an existing streetlight district at Ivy Estates subdivision on Gardner Road in District 5. We have a resolution as well from Senior Services to approve the First Amendment to the agent's sub-grant contract between the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Henry County Board of Commissioners for FY 2017 and 2018. And as previously noted, the Henry County DOT resolution regarding the speed humps and the ivies and the harbors at West Ridge subdivisions have been removed. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda to be discussed? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved as stated and this ends the consent agenda. We now move into our Public Safety item and we'll ask Deputy Chief Mark Ammerman to come and present a resolution to request the purchase of some items with the federal asset forfeiture and seized funds.
Good morning, Chair Wood and fellow Commissioners. I did come before you this morning to ask to use federal seized funds to buy several items this morning. The first item is 14 in-car camera systems. Currently, we have several that have obsolete cameras that are broken. I believe it is very important that all of our patrolmen have working in-car camera systems, not only so they can record their daily activities and evidence the prosecution cases, but also this assists us in the police department maintaining its transparency with the public that we serve. So I ask that we will be able to get those. We do, we did receive a bid through Henry County Purchasing. The 14 camera systems are going to cost $78,513. The next item we'd like to purchase is a new recording system for the South Precinct interview rooms. These rooms are what detectives use on a daily basis to record suspects and witnesses in such cases as murders, rapes, armed robberies, aggravated assaults. You can see they're very important. Unfortunately, the system at South Precinct is an old analog system. We're using DVD players to record interviews unlike the North Precinct that has a complete digital system. We do need to upgrade this system. We've had, had failures in this system where it didn't even record interviews in very important cases. We did obtain a quote through contact through Technology Services. The equipment to upgrade this system would be $19,583, installation would be $6,500, with a total of $26,083 to upgrade the system to where we needed to be. The next item I'd like to use the seized funds to purchase is two undercover vehicles. As you know, Henry County Police for many years has been part of the Flint Circuit Drug Task Force. As members of the task force, we do supply personnel as well as equipment. Two of these vehicles that they've been using for years have now been identified as law enforcement vehicles. Obviously, in their undercover operations, if they know they're law enforcement, they're no longer worth anything to the undercover officers. Those vehicles will be given to Fleet Services to be sold at auction. We'd like to purchase two, only two new to us, but two used vehicles from a local vendor. Those two new vehicles, including a credit that we have with the provider of almost $3,000, will cost a total of $40,000. Now lastly, the last item we'd like to buy, we'd like to purchase a training class. It's for interview techniques. As you know, communication, 90% of it is body language. Well, what this class focuses on is for the interviewers and detectives to learn how to read these body languages so they can help detect when a person is lying and being untruthful. We believe this is going to help our detectives greatly in the prosecution of the cases. These four items come to a total of $152,096. We do have that amount in our seized funds accounts and I request your approval to buy these items, which I think will significantly enhance the police department's ability to serve the citizens of Henry County. Any questions on these items?
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Are there any questions? Commissioner Prince.
Chief, the question I have on the in-car camera systems, what cars are these going in? These going in the VIXs or which cars?
Whichever one, most of them would still be VIXs, but it'll be serviceable VIXs. They'll be ones we're going to have. These are the new watch guard system. We're talking, we're replacing old Mobile Visions camera systems, the obsolete ones. Either we can't get parts for them any longer or it's just not feasible to keep throwing money into these old systems. It would be more cost-effective just to buy a new camera system for these vehicles.
All right. To further that question, can we take these cameras out and put them in new vehicles and get them and replace those VIXs?
If the cars were to go down, yes, we can move and we have in the past. When cameras are still serviceable and the vehicle normally is, yes, they can be passed on to other cars and we do do that.
Okay.
Commissioner Holmes.
Chief, who is the sole source provider and is there a possibility we could use a local vendor for?
Absolutely. We're talking about undercover vehicles. I really didn't want to get into it, but I will assure you, we are buying these vehicles from a dealer in Henry County.
Okay. Good question. Other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Clemmons.
I have a comment. First of all, I want to say that this is huge. I think anytime that the police department is coming to us about technology upgrades, training, and transparency, I think that's good. So I just want to commend the police department for that. I know the technology is a big issue and that I've been really harping on, we need to upgrade our technology so that you can keep the community safer. So the training, I just want to say that the training is really good and I would like to see more of the training for the police department.
Yes, ma'am. Sounds good.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe on the next item too.
Very good. Thank you.
I was asked to give a brief update on manpower and our recruiting efforts in the police department over the past year, so I wanted to upgrade us on it. Currently, Henry County Police Department has 226 sworn positions. Since January of this year, we have hired 11 certified officers, 27 non-certified officers, and as of yesterday's date, we have lost 34 and we have hired 38 officers. Our current openings for the police department today, we only have 14 openings. I would like to note that as of July 1st, we are at our high. We had 31 openings as of July 1st of this year. My recruiting team has done an awesome job and in the last five months, we have reduced that number to only 14 openings. I also like to note, in the last six months, those 11 certified officers I told you that we hired, five of those were previously employed here and now have come back to work for Henry County Police Department. Is there any questions about manpower? Yes, sir.
I heard you say that five of those past employees came back to Henry County. Did they give a reason why they want to come back or why they came back?
I do have my recruiters here. I know what I've heard, some of them say they have come back, they've seen an atmosphere change and it was their buddies telling them to come back. I believe our absolute greatest recruiting tool to get officers to come to Henry County, it are the officers themselves. If the officers are happy and the officers are working hard and the officers are being treated fairly, they're going to go out and tell their buddies, they're going to go out and tell their friends and their family members and that's what's going to bring, really bring other police officers here. They talk to the patrolmen working the streets. A lot of outside agencies live here, we're seeing that. We're seeing a lot of Clayton officers come. I know we interviewed two Atlanta police officers that came down and tested, they want to come back down here. We get the Cav officers over here. I think there's been a huge morale increase and I think the officers are out talking to their friends and I think that's why there's been such an uptick and reduction in our openings.
So you're saying the climate and attitudes towards being a Henry County police officer has changed, it's overall positive now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sounds good.
Other questions or comments? Commissioner Barron.
Yes, Mr. Ammerman, I just want to commend you and the sheriff for doing all that you do and, and I'll tell you, for the last six months, I hadn't heard anything but positive comments coming out of the police department. Thank you.
Well, we've been trying. I have a couple more quick updates, if you all would indulge me just a second. I did recently just get the GBI Crime Index report back for 2016. Of course, it's the state and they are a year behind, but this shows where we're at right now. And just for our viewers at home, what is a crime index number that I'm going to talk about here and how do you receive a crime index number? It's a calculation that's divided by the crime rate by the population and then multiplying it by 1,000. The reason I wanted to show this, last year in 2015, our crime index was 29.3 and this year's report that just most recently came out, it's dropped to only 26.9, which is an 8% reduction in crime, which I thought was significant. As the map shows, this also places Henry County as the third lowest when you compare it to all surrounding counties around us and the only ones that are below us are Newton and Butts who have a much significant lower population than we do. So I thought this was significant and I wanted to update the board and let you know where we're going. So right now, crime's going down in Henry County, which is a great thing. And I equate that to just all the officers working so hard and out there making it happen every day for all the citizens of Henry County. A couple other things I wanted to mention real quick, we did just place and 100 new patrol rifles for service out to all the patrolmen. Unfortunately, in the stay in age that we're living in now and active shooters and terrorist threats, it has become necessary to arm our officers with the patrol rifles, but this is a motivating thing for the officer and it also gives them the tools for the things that we're asking them to do. When we do have these kind of events, we expect our guys to run to the gunfire and they don't back away and go the other way, so we need to give them the tools that we, that they need and deserve. And we have done that and the board has done that and seen to it and we just give them 100, 100 patrol rifles. As well, we've given them all backup weapons in the last six months. I also wanted to note that in 2017, we'd done approximately 20 women's self-defense classes. I think this is, this is huge too. Not only are we teaching women how to defend themselves, we're also teaching them what to look out for and how not to ever become victims so they don't have to use the new skills that they learned. I would equate this to one of the reasons why we do have a drop in crime. We're trying to educate our citizens to be smarter so they don't ever become victims, but as well, we are teaching them how to defend themselves, so I think that's an awesome deal. We're still continuing due to Civilian Police Academy with our most recent graduate. Chair Wood is among us this morning. I think this is an awesome tool that we use to help bridge the gap between the police and the citizens we serve. We're able to give them so much more insight than what we're out there doing every day. As far as technology, we have just initiated our drone program. We've actually are fully capable now. We have jumped through all the FAA requirements. This has been quite extensive to get all the paperwork done and be able to do what we're able to do now. Now we can fly anytime, day or night, and without all the classes and the certifications, you're not supposed to fly drones over people, you're not supposed to fly them over crowds, we can't use them at night. But what the drones are going to allow us to do now is fly over crime scenes to be able to get that aerial shot as well as accident scenes. The other thing is we have one of our drones that is equipped with a FLIR system. This is going to assist us with looking for lost and missing people. Now if you look at the cost of these drones versus what it would cost a helicopter to come out, we're saving our taxpayers huge amounts of money. And now we actually have 12 certified pilots spread throughout the shifts for a quick response. And we have two drones now, working on a third drone, so we're going to have, be able to have this response and be able to have a constant coverage going on. When one needs to come down, another one come up. So I'm just really impressed with what staff's done over at the PD with, with the drone program or moving forward. It's been, been a good deal. The last thing I just wanted to mention real quick, you know, it keeps coming up in the news is all the mental health issues and that the officers coming in contact. We see it throughout the whole country where officers are being involved in these shootings. We, as a department, have done an awesome job sending our officers through this critical incident training as well. We've now, we've now done a lot of work updating our crisis negotiator team. We now have 12 officers that are fully trained for barricaded situations, hostage situations, impersonal suffering, and suicidal tendencies. And they're spread out on all shifts, we can have this immediate response. This is the next level above what everybody else is certified at. So this is, this is a great deal and we're looking, we're seeing problems and we're, we're trying to find the answers before they become bigger. And we're even looking, looking at issues now before they ever become problems. So things are, things are going extremely well in the police department. We're moving in a positive direction and, and I just want to give you a little update on what, what we have going on right now. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Couple of comments and I have one too. Commissioner Wilson.
Chief, thank you for the update and thank you for the work you and the departments doing. Henry County safe and moving forward and thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Wilson, I want to commend you, Commissioner Barron. I mean Clemmons, I'm sorry.
I would like for you to email me a copy of the crime index paper that you just showed and it would be helpful, our staff, if we could definitely put this in the newspapers. If crime is down and our schools are going up, we're bringing economic development and I look at all those counties around us, I think Henry's in a good position and we need to definitely talk about it. People come up all the time talking about the crime, but those are the facts, that crime is down in Henry and thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barron.
Yes, thanks again and I'd just like to ask you, I know we recently bought some of those speed trailers, are they ready to go now?
Yes, sir, they're ready to go. You tell me where they want them. I believe some of your partners up there have already asked me, but I have one for every district and we'll make it happen and I think it'll be a great tool to get out there and slow, slow people down, so.
Great.
As long as you keep it down to one spot in your district, I'll make it happen, unless you want to borrow one of your buddies.
All right. I'll be in touch.
And I'll say, oh, about when we see before Thanksgiving, there was a speeder in my subdivision that was DUI that hit me and I think, you know, we need those speed traps. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Brad and then I'll come. Okay.
I would like to also reiterate the culture change that Deputy Chief and thank the sheriff also for the last six months of what they've done to change the police department, to make it a, really make it a big difference in our community. The, also the body cameras, I mentioned in-car cameras in the presentation and the need for them. What Deputy Chief didn't mention, yep, he's still working, they've been working, his team along with the sheriff and his staff for about six months on the body cameras and getting that. That is an important initiative for us in Henry County, provide that for the safety of our officers and the safety of our public. Definitely 70% into that project. A demonstration will be held very soon, but that is something that they're looking at strongly to move forward. Again, number one, for all our public safety personnel is safety and we want to make sure we do everything we can and appreciate the board's commitment and with this approval of this, this additional items plus in the past items to make these guys, these men and women as safe as possible. The last thing I would like to do is, the PD had their awards banquet last Friday and Officer Smith here is, is with us and I just want to recognize Officer Smith for receiving Rookie of the Year. He received two awards with the one being Rookie of the Year and we want to thank him for his service and what he does every day. Officer Smith, identify you. He's a little shy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, a couple of things. Could you make a mention of all the other officers that received awards at the banquet this past week because I don't know if we've got all their names, but we definitely need to commend them and if we don't have those names readily available, let's publicize that as well.
Sure, they will be publicized. Officer Smith, the only one with us today who received awards, just, just with us.
So let's recognize them maybe on a future meeting as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Just several things. I encourage everyone to please consider going through the Citizens Police Academy because what to me is revealed is not only the great talent and the commitment of the officers that we have here in Henry County that are working so hard to keep our communities safe, but you also get to see the investments of, that the citizens have made into this county through, you know, I remember seeing the SWAT vehicle and, and all the other investments that have been made. So you get to really get a personal touch of what the officers are doing and how they're doing it, but I tell you, the passion that these men and women get up with every day, the long hours that they have, even the sacrifice of their families definitely shows through. So we encourage individuals to definitely continue that. I do want to say, continue to just say thank you to the officers, just if you go out and just talk to one, I mean, just if you see someone in passing, just to hear the motivation in their hearts, the, I remember the one that I keep hearing the most is that I feel good about coming to work every day. And, and that is profound, that's important because if they are motivated, then of course, they can do their jobs better. So I commend, again, the leadership, again, with you, Deputy Chief Ammerman, the, of course, the sheriff and everybody else who's on that leadership team, because again, it makes a big difference here in our community. And again, we applaud you and we appreciate the update today as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Okay, well, let's move into our next item regarding a SPOS resolution to approve a budget amendment regarding the design build of the North Ola Park Expansion Project. Good morning, Ms. Platten.
Commissioners, before you, it's a resolution to approve a budget amendment and award a contract to design-build the North Ola Park Expansion Program, Project located in District 3 using SPOS IV funds. The park expansion project is planned for the property that was previously purchased behind North Ola, or I'm sorry, Ola Elementary School, and the scope of work will involve two baseball fields, a concession and restroom building, and parking. The purchasing department solicited the proposals for the design-build project and the RFP was advertised on the webs, the county website, the Team Georgia Marketplace website, and the ACCG GLGA website. Perspective vendors were also notified via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. There were two responsive proposals received. The proposals were reviewed and scored by an evaluation committee and SportsTurf of Whitesburg, Georgia, received the highest evaluation score. After negotiating the scope of work, the evaluation committee recommends accepting SportsTurf's best and final offer in the amount of $2,103,167. A budget amendment is necessary, transferring $1,401,210, I'm sorry, $401,210 from the SPOS IV District 3 Jason T. Harper Arena Improvement Account to the SPOS IV District 3 North Ola Park Account. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now move into our Fleet Services items. We have a, we actually have two resolutions, and we welcome Mr. Jody Swartz to make those presentations.
Good morning, Chairman and Board.
Good morning.
Fleet Services supports police, fire, and all the departments, you know, in the county, and we've worked with Brad and trying to get a new program going. I guess we're kind of sponsoring and looking at the purchases, and we have the funds in a capital account. We solicited, per the board's request, we solicited bids, purchasing bid, and the bid tabulation for the purchase of nine 2018 Ford Pursuit Utility Explorers and two 2018 Ford Escapes. One will be for Senior Services, and one will be for Tax Assessor's Office. The recommendation is to purchase these vehicles from Allen Vigil Ford tomorrow on sealed bid 18-12 at a total of $281,633. You have any questions?
Okay, we've heard the presentation, questions. Commissioner Holmes?
County Manager, about two months ago, there was a request from the DA's office and the solicitors offices for, for vehicles. Can you update us on where that is?
Yes, sir. We actually, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Swartz has actually been working on a vehicle replacement plan, and what they're doing is as the vehicles, as they get through the process, they're rolling out requests like this one this morning. They are aware of that request, and that is something that we are going to be including as part of our replacement, so we are working.
Is there a timeline on that?
I'm sorry?
Is there a timeline on that? When this, when this shit happened?
There's a timeline pending funding commission. Where, then that request came in, this is the request, these here are part of our June of last year, as we revamped the whole county, but another request coming forward with that funding mechanism attached.
Okay, other questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So, move.
We have a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Any questions or comments or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The resolution is approved as stated. We're now moving to the next resolution.
Okay, next resolution is for 10 2018 Dodge Chargers, and also at the request of the board, we bid it out. The bid tabulation's attached. These are for 10 2018 Dodge Chargers to meet the operational needs for the police department only on this one. Recommendation is to purchase these vehicles from Landers McLarty DCJR of Huntsville, Alabama, based on sealed bid 18-11 at a total cost of $204.17. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
So, move.
We have a motion?
Second.
There's a second. Any further questions or discussions? Commissioner Holmes?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? The resolution is approved. Thank you, Mrs. Swartz.
Thank you, Board.
Okay. As noted previously at the onset of the agenda, items 10 regarding the airport, A, B, and C have been removed at the request of the county manager, so we'll move now into item 11 regarding the building and plan review, and we'll ask Ms. Gina Thompson to, to be involved in that presentation. And good morning, Mr. Patterson as well.
Just to say for words, once you get started, thank you to the Chair, the Board, the County Manager's Office, and other county employees for the support. Thank you.
All right, glad to see you back.
Good morning, Chair Wood and Board members. Due to the state of Georgia updating its soil erosion, sedimentation, and pollution control ordinance, Henry County is required to comply with the Update and Amend Chapter Three through Five, Subchapter Five of Henry County Code of Ordinance entitled Soil Erosion, Sedimentation, and Pollution Control. Therefore, I am bringing the updated ordinance in front of the Board of Commissioners for adoption. In your agenda package, you will notice Exhibit A, all the highlighted text, which is the new or updated language provided by the state of Georgia. Should you have any questions, we are here to answer them for you.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Prince?
Hey, George.
Hey.
Question I have, I'm sure everybody read this in the entirety, on page eight, Section 15, I just had a question. It says, "Or where bulkheads and seawalls are installed to prevent shoreline erosion on Lake Oconee and Lake Sinclair." Why is this included in Henry County ordinance? And I ask this, as there's many, many lakes in the state, and these two are in Greene County, I believe, and I'm just kind of curious, is this accurate? Is this pulled from Greene County?
It's accurate. Some of the data is mandated because we are local issue authorities, so some data we have to receive. We can only make small modifications like erosion control, bonds, a couple of things. Like, in Henry County, just say Lake Spivey, for example, we have, we have exemption, less than 100 square feet of disturbance, they don't have to get a buffer variance. And all buffer variance is requested through the Building and Plan Review Department, provided with a letter that goes to EPD for your seawalls or anything that's larger than 100 square feet.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify and make sure with, you know, we're not going to be issuing permits for Lake Oconee and Lake Sinclair. So, I was just kind of curious where they had come from, so.
It's pretty much blanket across the whole state for all local issue authorities.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor? Any opposed? The ordinance to amend is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now moving to our planning and zoning item regarding an ordinance to amend sections of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. And Mr. Jeb Holder from Storm Waters here to, to present.
Good morning, Chair, District Commissioners.
Good morning.
Very happy to be here this morning to present these proposed items to our Unified Land Development Code on behalf of our Stormwater Department and collaborative effort with other splendid members of our Henry County staff and the Building Department, code enforcement, and Department of Transportation, especially our wonderful Planning and Zoning Department staff. These proposed amendments were part of a review process of our existing code to comply with state requirements, Metropolitan or Georgia Water Planning District. The, the state mandate is to incorporate codes that do not impede the use of green infrastructure or low-impact development, and as part of our review of our existing code, which we did not have anything really specific to that, we also reviewed our neighboring county's code, and what we came up with was a way to sort of take a watershed protection approach initiative through implementation of our code. Most of the green infrastructure, low-impact development practices are intended to mimic natural landscape features and to be implemented in more urbanized communities where the, where you've already lost those features essentially. So, we came up with some ways to better protect our aquatic resources while also alleviating some of the problems we've seen, especially in primarily the residential development The green infrastructure and low-impact development codes are, again, are mandated by the state and, and have to be adopted. Those would be located in Section Six of the ULDC. Amendments to other sections of the ULDC would include Sections Three, Five, and Twelve. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
Thank you. We've heard the presentation, so are there any questions from the board? Commissioner Prince?
Thank you. Again, I'm sure everybody read this in the entirety, but I do have a question. In Section 6.01.01, subsection two, subheading C, it says, "Use of pervious permeable materials for parking areas and private roads under 25 miles per hour." Define private road, and the reason I'm asking this, I don't really want any roadways being paved with pervious pavers. They'll break down, they're, they're just not good for traveling. And define what we mean by private roadway. Do you mean driveways?
Yes, sir. It'd be driveways, anything non-maintained by the county.
Okay, because I'm, I'm just looking at loopholes, and, you know, a road is private until they deed it over to the county, so I'm just little concerned with that, but you did correct it, and I saw in the old section, it did say, it did not say private, it just said roadways.
Right.
So, I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to think of loopholes of how developers get away with short cutting.
Yes, sir.
You know, some of the projects they do. So, that's the only question I have. Thank you.
All right. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the ordinance to amend the chapter. It's been approved. Okay, we will now move into our Technology Services Resolution to approve the licensing implementation of the Tyler Munis ERP software and the Tyler New World Public Safety software. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning.
The item before you this morning is a budget amendment to transfer $4,020,678 from cash on hand in the Capital Fund 351-0000-399-3000 to Technology Services Capital Fund The board previously earmarked funds for the ERP and public safety systems in March 2016 by Resolution Number 16-56. Also, this approves the licensing and implementation of Tyler's ERP and public safety systems in amount of $1,965,659 and $1,952,423 respectively, for a total of $3,918,082. This also approves the amount, annual maintenance in the amount of $241,589 and $189,418 respectively, beginning in year two. This is a pricing through NJPA Contract Number 110-110-515-TTI. Of course, we got through all the legalese, but this is something that's been coming for a long time, and I'm very, very excited about this in, in Technology Services. I want to introduce Andy Dobbs. He is currently our Operations Manager for Technology Services. I'm sure everyone knows him and has seen him. If this is approved, he will be assigned as the permanent project director, project manager, whatever we call in this position, to implement these two products going on. So, if there are any questions, I will turn it over to Mr. Dobbs.
Morning, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you.
Good morning.
Just a little, there are probably three or four of us in the room that are excited about the underlying technologies, so we won't talk about that much. Let's talk about what the benefit would be to our employees and our citizens and so forth. County government systems are a three-legged stool. We have the ERP, which is Enterprise Resource Planning, just an acronym, but it's for the back-office systems, general ledger, accounting, finance, purchasing, human resources, payroll, fleet, and other departments that are, that are county operational departments. The, the second leg to that stool is your public safety systems, fire, police, 911, sheriff, jail. The third leg of that stool is the court systems. We're not talking about the court systems today, but should this get approved, then they will move to the oldest systems in the county if we get this approved. The current ERP and public safety systems are quite old, approaching 20 years old. If the board approves the resolutions and ERP and public safety systems go into implementation, which should take a couple of years probably, then we would, at that, end of that time, probably look at the court systems. The ERP software from Tyler called Munis, that's the product name, it, it really is going to help the employees in, in efficiency and decision-making. It's got decision support systems built in, which weren't even kind of thought of when our current software was developed in the late 1990s. It's going to improve operational efficiency. It has, one of the things, I'll just point out maybe one or two things going forward for each of these points, is it has a deep and wide integration of Microsoft Office, which, which obviously our current systems don't have, and so, you can, you can actually do work in a spreadsheet and upload it to the database rather than have to key it all in. That's just one example. It, it creates consistency of data and processes. In your, in your resolution, it talks about disparate technology platforms that don't really talk well to each other. This is on one technology platform. The databases are, are all the same technology, and so, getting data in and out is so much easier and more straightforward for the user and the technology folks as well. A big benefit is going to be citizen interaction with the citizen self-service module. We get feedback from citizens on, on things the board wants to put out there for, on the online system, to have feedback come back. We'll engage citizens in dialogue for the things the board wants to, to put out there for citizens to get, get, get what they feel would be the best path forward, for example, and extend hours of operation where you don't have to have citizens coming in here from eight to five or, or eight to six, but, but obviously the website would be, the citizen self-service would be there 24 hours a day. Just a, just a couple of things along that line. We're going to have employee self-service. Right now, employees have to deal with paper, with HR and payroll, but they would have a, an employee portal where they could view their check stubs. We don't have to print those out or send them via email. They would, they would view their benefits and, and elect their, their, their new, new insurance, all the personal information, the address changes, the federal, state withholdings would all be in that employee portal, so we would get a lot of synergies there as well. And we even have a vendor self-service portal, so that if the remittance address to a vendor changes, then they could just go in and change it in the vendor self-service portal for us, rather than send a piece of paper in and someone keying it into the purchasing system. On the public safety side, right now, we have systems that are, that are germane strictly to the county, and it's hard to share crime data with these other, with the four municipalities in Henry County. And so, this system will break down barriers between jurisdictions and, and provide a central repository in a common database format that, that the other, that the other municipalities can inquire on and share data between, between the county and those municipalities. And it'll contribute as well to the citizen self-service, because the citizens will have ready access to crime information, accident information, the jail inmate status, and those kind of things that our citizens would be interested, interested in as well. The last thing I'll point out is it'll be compatible with all the national crime data formats. The, the NEEM model, the INDEX model, the GXDM model, those don't mean anything to us as acronyms, but they're very important in sharing data with the FBI, the federal, and the state, state crime databases. And so, with that, we would recommend these systems, and I'd be happy to take any, any questions you have.
All right, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson, then we'll come to Commissioner Barnes.
How's this going to affect the dispatching of units? You mentioned 911.
Yes.
So, how's this going to affect the dispatching of police and fire and sheriff units?
And so, the, the, the 911 system would be, once we get the new 911 system in, the, we have what we call seats or licenses in, in the, in, in, in the quote, for all, all the vehicles and, and for both police, fire, and sheriff, so they could be, have the CAD system in their vehicles and be able to not only be dispatched, but rather than call in on a radio or type in, they would have one button access to, "I'm on scene, I'm en route, I need backup," those kind of things. And so, it's going to, for safety, we talked about that earlier with the Deputy Chief of Police, but for safety, for, for citizen safety, for, for crime resolution and containment, that we would have all those where they wouldn't have to call or talk if they're in a stressful situation, they can punch one button and get backup. Punch one button, "I'm on scene." Punch one button, "I'm en route," those kind of things.
So, this unit is, can dispatch the closest unit to a call as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it also could mean that necessarily...
Commissioner, I have a question. Today, we have static dispatching, where static...
Today, we have static dispatching, where static dispatching, you assume someone is at the station or a police unit is a zone. This will be GPS dispatch. So if you have a unit coming to DOT, leaving DOT, the computer would actually send the closest unit to that incident, not just static dispatching. So it's going to be fluid and it'll be able to dispatch the closest unit to the appropriate scene, which would decrease our response times on all the public safety entities dramatically. This is a game changer. To put mobile data terminals in our apparatus, all public safety apparatus, to have that information, we're ten to twelve years behind the curve already. So this is a game changer for our public safety, for our citizens in Henry County.
Into the system, it detects that as well and dispatches unit around those roads?
It does. Mapping software works with our GIS system and has this live data every day.
Okay.
If we set the commissioners heavily integrated into our GIS system, and so we'll have all of those maps, have all the overlays, we'll have everything available in the, not only to nine one one, but we'll have it available in the cars. Well, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Clement.
As Brad just said, this is a game changer. We are twenty years behind. But there's two things that I'm concerned about. I know with the Munis, there's a lot of training, and the ERP system, there's a lot of training. I didn't hear anything about how we're going to make sure that when we get this high-tech system, how the employees that we have are going to be trained on how to use it, because it's so much into this technology system that we don't get the best use if the employees are not trained on how to use it. So the training is going to be something that we're going to have to finance or fund. And the second thing, and I'll let you answer both of them, is there is a ten percent annual increase on the maintenance of this product.
Up to.
And I know that when I came in office, there were some technology upgrades or some fees that we had to do because of former boards did not read this stuff. So today, you know, once we approve this, two years from now, three years from now, the board that's sitting up here will be seeing an increase. We have some capital needs. We have some funding needs in this county. And it goes back to, we need this stuff, but this board is going to have to be ready to pass a capital funds bond so that we can fund the stuff that we need. We sit here, we vote on it, and then we don't want to continue it and we don't want to fund it. So we're all excited about it, but let's get ready. Staff, you need to bring to us something so that we can borrow, bond some money that is not going to be a cost to our citizens, that we need to be able to fund what this county needs. So I just want to address the ongoing training and that there's going to be a need to fund ten percent of what we're doing today in two years. And that ten, it's going to increase by ten percent every year.
Correct. Up to ten percent, but I will address the training. The training is baked into the proposal. We will have extensive training as we implement and roll out these various modules. There'll be a lot of modules being rolled out, and the training is baked in. Now, to your point, the ongoing training, after the folks from Tyler leave us in a couple of years, then that's where we have to figure that out and have an ongoing process with people who are trained. And this is the best time to get those people involved that are going to be the training folks and the liaisons between the software company and the users, to train them now. There'll never be an opportunity to get this depth of training as we roll out these modules. So we need probably a small staff on the ERP side or operational side and a small staff on the public safety side, maybe a couple of people each, to go forward and be those liaisons, so we can onboard a new patrol officer, we can onboard a new accounts payable person and have the training laid out for them as we go forward when Tyler leaves the premises.
Continuously after this, yes, definitely.
I think that's the thing that we need to definitely look at, because we have people in these other counties that are training. They put training into their budgets and they're making sure that their staff is training. And so it needs to be an ongoing training. And I would like to see some type of way that we have requirements for our staff to make sure that they're having some type of continuing education hours on trainings of these systems when we're investing this type of money.
Sure.
Absolutely, and I'm sure Andy briefly discussed it, but myself, Brad, and our Technology Services group has already started thinking in advance. And we call them super user groups, where we will have individuals from our public safety group and from our non-public safety group who will be the trainers in training the trainers. But you are absolutely correct in terms of getting our staff trained and making sure that we don't have software programs here that everyone can't utilize. I was pleased to see in the proposal that the initial training is incorporated into that cost. But I think it's also important to note that ten years ago, Andy was hired to come in and do the ERP system. And here it is, we're finally at this point. And so he's the resident expert in making this a success. But you're absolutely right that once Andy decides, you know, two or three years or four or five years from now, I'm going to hang up my hat. We've got to make sure that we have the right people in place that we can go forward with it. So that is something that we're already working on and we'll be sure to make sure that we include the board in those conversations, because you all will be users as well.
Right, and we've had Andy for ten years, the board changes, so we need to make sure that we're supporting the training and supporting the technology upgrades for this county.
I agree, thank you.
Commissioner Prince?
Appreciate you guys bringing us up here and see. I've been working on this four years now, I actually campaigned on this. And let me explain to the citizens real quick, because we're about to spend a whole lot of money, and I think it's important for them to understand. At Henry County right now, we are using a DOS-based system. And I want everybody to think back to DOS-based systems. I don't even remember hardly DOS-based systems. Everybody's on Windows now, and I mean literally, we have our finance department, everything's on a green screen, the old DOS-based green screen system. And when I got elected, I came in getting something simple as a financial report. It was almost impossible. I would ask for a financial report and they literally had to go through and tabulate the data almost by hand.
Lot of Excel.
Blew me away. You know, payroll, everything was run through this DOS-based system. And it's gotten to a point, it's just, it's useless anymore. It's become so labor-intensive to do anything. And so this is one of those things we had to do. I know it's a lot of money, but at some point, you have to step up. And I mean, we need to go Windows-based. I cannot believe I'm actually sitting up here in two thousand seventeen talking about we need to go Windows-based, but we still haven't done it. Now, the question I do have, and I'm going to get back to public safety here in a minute, our current system. I know that we've had a lot of conversations about taking the data in our old system and being able to convert it to the new system. And there was a lot of back and forth of being able to do this. So question right now, before we get into public safety, are we going to be able to take the data from the last twenty years, convert it reasonably and put it into our new system?
My current thought today, and of course, I report to people, and so we could have a different answer. My thought is that we convert the minimal amount to start business in the new system, to get us going. And then we make a decision of whether it's worth converting or if we just leave the old systems running as archives until that data becomes obsolete. And that would be my recommendation. That's certainly not the final answer, because obviously other people will be making that decision. But that's my recommendation, is that's what we do. Because the converting of that old data, the data is, I'll use the term dirty, it's not well-defined in these old systems. And it would take an enormous amount of manual labor to actually move data across. If you're talking about vendors, if you're talking about old financial data that was in a different chart of accounts going back twenty years. You'd have to roll that forward into the current chart of accounts, every piece of data. It would just be a monumental effort.
And Commissioner Prince, that is something also internally that we've already discussed. And we've spoken with several surrounding jurisdictions that have gone through the same process. And a number of them, maybe more than ninety-nine point nine percent, have said, stay away from bringing in a lot of the old data. If you all will recall, I believe last year, this board approved a server for our AS400 system. So a lot of that information is going to be stored there, and that information will still remain. So if we need to be able to tap into that information, we'll be able to pull it back. But we do believe at the staff level that it's best for us to pull in as small amount as possible so that we can start with clean data and that we can make sure going forward that we have a clear format for how that data's going to be entered.
That is the biggest point of failure, any of these is data conversion.
Right.
So, but those new AS400s we have will...
They'll run a long time.
They'll run twenty years easily. So the data's fine, it'll be there backed up and safe.
Let's just make sure we keep somebody who knows how to get that data out, for sure. And then let me speak to public safety real quick, so the citizens understand why we're, again, spending this money. Right now, as everybody knows, I spend a lot of time in a police car. We do things just like they did in the seventies.
Yes, sir.
We call on the radio, we have to wait for dispatch. I've had a simple traffic stop that's taken forty-five minutes because dispatch was busy and couldn't get back to us. With this system, as everybody's mentioned before, it's going to make our officers much more effective. It will make our officers on scene quicker, the response times will go down, same with the fire department. And it's really about customer service. Yes, it costs a bit upfront, but at some point, we've got to make that transition. And we've put some money back, you know, for a while to do this. And I'm glad to see we're finally moving forward. But it's just reached that point in the data that we have to move forward. And it's going to be a major help to the citizens, getting the patrol units there, for them to be able to access a simple thing, GCIC, which, you know, you do a traffic stop, you don't know if the car that you're walking up to is stolen because you're waiting on dispatch to get back to you.
Correct.
But for our officers with GCIC, they can run the license plate and in thirty seconds have, "I know that car's stolen," before they go up to the car and get blindsided. So it's very important that we, you know, we look out for our officer's safety and for our citizens as we move forward. Now, on the bond thing, I do want to talk about that. I'm not sure that I am in agreement that we need to bond or borrow money to pay for annual budget items. So that's just, is a note to staff on that. But I appreciate you bringing this forward. Like I say, I've been plugging away at this for four years. I know we had some back and forth with the other system. And I see we finally went with Tyler. And I'm glad we did. I know the state, I believe that's what the state uses.
Yes, sir.
So we can get all linked in with them and actually extend our database on our criminals here in the county. So I appreciate everything that you've guys done, and I know it's been a long time.
I will make one final comment in relation to that, is that there are fifty municipalities and counties in the state of Georgia using this software. So we're not plowing new ground here. It's works, there's municipalities using it, counties using it, and then all in the state of, fifty in the state of Georgia.
All right, I have a question. This is big news for all departments, no doubt. So what's our implementation timeline? Did you say, I know it's going to be major, because any time you do a system change, it is major. And yes, we've highlighted that it's going to take a lot of training, but what do you see as our proposed timeline?
We're looking at about a two-year for the ERP and about a two-year for the public safety from start to finish. And the question is, do we overlap them some or do them serially? And that really kind of depends on how many people we can put on the project.
Other questions?
Full-time people.
Yeah, full-time people.
I'm sorry.
As full-time people.
How many full-time people we can, myself, if it's just me, it's going to, you know, it's going to take longer. If we can put three or four more people on the project full-time, then we could probably overlap them.
Definitely best wishes and all. Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, we've heard the presentation, there are lots of good questions. We're now open the floor for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We will now move into our purchasing item, item fourteen regarding a resolution for a proposal for a comprehensive user fee and rate study by Mr. Gray.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This item was solicited through a sealed proposal for a comprehensive user fee and rate study, which includes a review of our current cost structure. The purpose of this project is to ensure that the county's cost allocation method accurately accounts for the true cost of providing various programs and services within its operations. If the county's goal, it's the county's goal to have a well-documented and defensible cost allocation plan that will incorporate appropriate general administrative cost allocations into the budget, identify overhead rates that can be used in the calculation of billable hours for grants, fees, federal reimbursements and other billings, and develop charges for user fees. Two firms submitted proposals for this study, which were evaluated by an evaluation committee and scored. The recommendation is to award to the highest-scored firm, MGT Consulting Group from Tallahassee, Florida, who also submitted the lowest cost of fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. Funding for this study is available in the building department's budget.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Here are none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Are there any questions or comments or further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The resolution is approved. Well, item fifteen was removed regarding the division of the CBB funds. So we'll move into item sixteen from Human Resources and Risk Management regarding a resolution regarding the firefighter cancer insurance required by House Bill one forty-six. And we welcome Ms. Patterson for that presentation.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Item sixteen is a resolution to approve and adopt firefighters' required cancer coverage effective January one, twenty eighteen. As you know, earlier in the year, the Georgia House passed a bill that requires monetary benefits to firefighters in the event that they're diagnosed with cancer. And this is to be provided to all covered certified firefighters who are employed by the county beginning January one of twenty eighteen. So the county's benefits broker consultant sought proposals from available carrier options of ACCG and Chubb, as you know, and as reviewed in our workshop meeting on November fourteen. These companies offered the provision of coverage, and the proposals were received both from ACCG and Chubb. And it was determined by the team evaluating the options available to us that ACCG presented the most competitive rates with comparable offerings in service. So it's recommended that the board approve the ACCG cancer coverage with a three-year renewable rate guarantee of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars annually. And it's also recommended that the benefits consultant, broker consultant, in combination with the HR risk team, will review with the board of commissioners the experience after the first year in order to determine the path for provision of coverage for future years. The ACCG rate is a three-year guaranteed rate with the renewable rate available at the end of the first year for years two and three. Funding for the project is available within the fire department budget for year one. Okay, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those. And also, if needed, our broker consultants are here if you have specific technical questions about the coverage.
Okay, thank you. We've had the presentation, so Commissioner Wilson has a question.
Ms. Patterson, could you talk about the benefits being taken with retirees?
I will defer to our broker consultant to answer that question, sir. Mr. Gassus?
Can you repeat the question again, just for clarity?
Yes, the question is the benefits if retirees take that with them?
Yes, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for having us. Yes, it has a portability clause where they can take it. I have here, let me introduce some consultants. John Hanson worked closely with ACCG and Georgia Municipal Association, Ann Hartford, to develop this. I think they worked for a year and a half. So really technical questions he can answer. We also have today Deputy Director of Insurance Programs from ACCG, Ashley Abercrombie. And then a consultant that I work very closely with, James Ford, is here with us today. I don't, the portability clause is in by state, is in the House bill, so they, yes, they can take it with them.
Commissioner, speaking of the portability...
How does this legislation impact already-retired firefighters?
Sure. If, it applies to active firefighters as of January first who have served twelve consecutive months in a fire department. So if it's a retiree, retirees would not be eligible for the program. Only those who are actively in the service.
What if a recently-retired firefighter brought a case, a cancer case, against the county? How would that impact this legislation in the county?
It would not impact the legislation. Since that would be a different program, that would very likely be a workers' compensation movement as opposed to a filing of a claim under the benefit program.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, other questions from the board? Here are none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The resolution is approved, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move into our county attorney and tax assessor item regarding an ordinance to amend chapters one through four regarding the licensing, taxation and business regulations.
Good morning, Chair and Board.
Good morning, Chair and Board.
Good morning.
As you are all probably aware, in 1976, the Georgia Legislature created a specific freeport exemption for Henry County. And what that freeport exemption does is exempts from taxation personal property. And I'm giving a really broad summary of what that is. Personal property shipped into the state that's held in the state for distribution back out of the state, specifically distribution. So if, you know, Whirlpool sends a bunch of refrigerators to Georgia, they sit in the warehouse for a few months and get shipped out to Tennessee, those things wouldn't be subject to taxation for the time they're sitting in Georgia. That's a really big picture explanation what a freeport exemption is. That freeport exemption that applies in Henry County is a little bit different. In fact, it's substantially different than what applies in the rest of the state by virtue of this old 1976 constitutional amendment. The state has now caught up to us. The state has adopted some, recently has expanded the freeport exemption. So Henry County, for some 40 years, has sort of been ahead of the curve. The problem is, the state law that applies to everybody has filing deadlines. Deadlines when property owners wishing to take advantage of the freeport exemption have to file an application and essentially tell the tax assessor that our personal property is exempt. We don't have any filing deadline in the Henry County constitutional amendment. Back in 1976, the legislature didn't provide us with one. So what we are doing with this ordinance amendment is imposing deadlines to request that the tax assessor give those exemptions. Those deadlines match the deadlines provided for in the state law. And they're tiered. If you miss the first deadline, you're entitled to half of the exemption. If you miss the next, you're entitled to a lesser percentage of the exemption, depending on how late you are. What that allows the tax assessor to do is essentially complete its tax digest. Otherwise, they may or may not know that property is exempt. They may tax it, include it on the digest, we get hit with the big appeal, and we have to take property off of the digest. And we don't want to do that. We want some certainty going in to this process, and that's what this will attempt to do. What the tax assessor's office does now, and I think it's required by law, in fact, is notifies people that have this type of property that, hey, these are the filing deadlines. And the tax assessor's office will continue to do this. This is not an effort to trick anybody or catch anybody. It's an effort on the tax assessor's part to make sure that we know going in what's exempt and what's not exempt. And what we will be doing is adding a section to the county ordinance to correspond with our freeport exemption that provides those filing deadlines.
Okay, we've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question in reference to the level, the different levels of freeport exemption that counties can do. I know that the state lays out the level one, but isn't there something that we can do to have a percentage of the value that is taxed instead of doing the whole 100%?
There could have been. However, the property subject to the Henry County constitutional amendment exempts it all. So that's the.
Can we change that?
You might be able to change that, yes. Because it was done, the legislature authorized you to do it. The Board of Commissioners back in the 70s granted the exemption. It was carried over again in the 80s because we had a new constitution. It was carried over again. So let me explain. I believe you could do that. We would have to jump through a lot of hoops. We would be exercising our home rule powers. There would be a lot of advertising requirements. What we would have to do is essentially default to the state exemption. And I think the state exemption, John's going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's an all or nothing. I think it exempts 100% if they qualify.
And they file timely.
And they file timely.
It is 100% exemption, yes.
So basically, we would opt out of our local rule and opt into the state rule if that's.
So what I'm thinking is that, let me tell you my concern, is that we have companies that come into our community, like the large box manufacturing companies that come in. And then they get this exemption where they don't pay the local taxes, they don't pay the state taxes. So we don't benefit from that. But there are benefits that the state still gets when the local community has a lot of the burden of the infrastructure damages that happen with them being in our communities. And I think that there may be a way, and I would need Patrick, you guys, to look at this, that we can somehow maybe not give them 100% exemption, but maybe we give them an 80%, and then the county can benefit 20% on them being in our community. And if we adopt it this way, I want to make sure that that's something that we can take time to go back and look at. Or maybe we wait to do this to make sure that there's not something that we can leave in this community by having the big box companies here.
We'll certainly look at that. However, we currently have a 100% exemption. You're not granting it today. What you're doing for us today is providing application filing deadlines. So my recommendation would be, don't delay today's action. We need those deadlines in place before January 1, when the tax year hits. So we can certainly look at that.
Okay.
I want you to keep in mind, however, that this exemption only applies to personal property. It doesn't apply to the real property. So when they build the big warehouse, the warehouse and the land that sits on is still subject to taxation. It's just the stuff they put in it. The personal property, the box is full of whatever, whatever is being shipped through. So.
But we still are missing money by not having some type of tax on those things.
And we'll certainly look at it. My gut tells me, as I sit here without doing any research on it, my gut tells me what your option would be, would be to essentially repeal the existing taxation scheme and then adopt the state scheme. I think those are the only options. And I don't think, off the top of my head, and I haven't looked at it in a while, I don't think the state freeport scheme allows for any partial exemption, but we'll certainly look at it and give the board a report.
Or even if they didn't file in a timely manner and they want to do it, maybe we can have some type of options for those people that missed that, that would like to be able to do it. I just, I just think if there's money out there, we want to make sure that the county can benefit.
And if they, and the filing, the stagger, the staggering percentages of exemptions, if they file late for the first month, they get two-thirds of the exemption. If they file late the third month, they get 58.33%. I don't know what that equates to in simple math. And then if they file on June 1, they get 50%. And if they miss that, they waive the exemption altogether. So that, and that tracks the way the state penalties are set up. So we do, we have incorporated the late filing partial exemptions. Whether we can create an overall partial exemption, we'll just have to look at that and see.
Okay.
Commissioner Holmes? And then I'll have a comment as well.
Patrick, we have, you know, according to the meeting we had yesterday, we have about 15 million additional square footage of warehouse space coming online. And with all the warehouse space we have in Henry County, we're not going to be able to tax goods in those particular businesses. Maybe you can help me, I'll share. How much of an impact is that going to have on the county's budget coming up next year and years after?
Well, going forward, you won't lose any tax revenue that you're already receiving. So if, the only tax revenue that you've received that you will lose are those people that have paid a freeport exemption, that have paid tax, that are entitled to an exemption, and have filed an appeal, just like people that appeal value. But warehouse projects that aren't here yet, you're not receiving that money now. So you just won't, it's more money you won't receive in the future. I'm sure we could estimate, you know, some sort of projection on the value of those personal goods coming and going, what that tax revenue would be.
We will lose on existing warehouses, correct?
I'm sorry?
We're going to lose significant revenue on the existing warehouses.
There are a couple of property owners that were taxed, that the courts have decided they are entitled to freeport exemption. And that number, I want to say, is about probably $300,000 for, over the course of a couple of years. But this is the last time you will lose that money because the courts have only now determined that that freeport exemption is applicable.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like it's time for us to change our strategy. If we're only going to get property taxes, we should change our strategy in terms of the ratio of warehouses that we're recruiting versus professional services to Henry County. So, I mean, it's just time.
And the freeport exemption is a substantial inducement to distributors and e-commerce facilities that want to locate here. And if your goal is to bring those in, this is a great tool. If your goal is not to bring those in, this is a tool that might not be that beneficial to you. So it really depends on your perspective.
Yeah, and again, I think it'd be good if we had an overall presentation in the future about freeport exemption. But also, just to look at, we've got a new executive director in our development authority. And it would be good to really not only just talk about what this exemption does, but also talk about the jobs that are created, that benefits here, and also talk about the market. Because as we all know, there, yes, we do have a perception of a lot of warehousing here. And yes, we do need to think about other markets that we need to bring to this community. And there was a great chart that I saw produced that shows exactly where the distribution of the warehouses are. And we also need to couple that with the benefits that we are also getting, not just from the exemption, but how much revenue that they are bringing in through the property taxes that they are paying, in addition to the jobs that they are bringing. And again, just think about, how do we, again, make sure that we're balancing our market? So I just think that it would be good to have an overall presentation on that, so that we're a better understanding, so that the public understands as well. Because there are definitely a lot of concerns about the warehousing that we have here in the county. And at the same time, we need to think about how some of those property taxes and the jobs that have been created that have helped us to do some of the things that we are voting on today even.
Yeah, and, you know, in warehouses, I mean, they are employing a few hundred people. However, the people that they're employing can't even afford to live in Henry County. So what real benefit does it bring to, do they bring to Henry County? I don't really see it.
Well, I will, with the board's permission, I will coordinate with the county manager. And we'll plan to give a more detailed freeport presentation to the board in the next few months. I think there's probably going to be a lot of data gathering we want to do. And we'll certainly include the development authority and get their perspective as well. And we'll coordinate.
A percentage that we can, we don't have to do 100%.
And we'll look into that issue. I have not looked into that issue. We are, with what we are stuck with today is 100%. What's stuck with that are benefited, depends on your perspective. But that's what we have today. And what we really need to do is impose some filing deadlines, just so the tax assessor's office, Mr. Self's office, can manage this. They're stuck with what we provide them, and they are provided with this exemption today. And until it's repealed or replaced, they have to manage it. And this is a really important tool to help them effectively manage it.
Okay, Commissioner Prince?
Just a clarification, and I understand the freeport, I'm not asking about that. My question, to kind of piggyback on to the other commissioners, when we have a product, a widget, that comes into a warehouse, but then gets shipped to a person in Henry County, are we accounting for this? And where do, how do we capture that, that part of it?
If it's not shipped out of state, it remains taxable. Now, the way, realistically, the way it's handled is the owners, the facility owner or the owner of the product submits a tax return. It's basically a return that says, we've got this much in value of personal property, this much has been shipped out of state, this much remained in state. Or didn't get shipped. In some instances, there's a time limit on how long they can keep it. And we do rely on the owner to provide a tax return to us. And if it looks out of whack, if it doesn't appear right, there's a process the tax assessors can go through to deal with it. But it's a self-reporting type tax thing. And there's substantial penalties if they falsify it. I mean, it's a crime to falsify those documents. But it's like a lot of other, like, most of us file tax returns, and we do it the same way.
I just wouldn't want to miss out on capturing taxes of items that are actually shipped here in the county or here in the state. You know, I just don't see any checks and balances. It's a little concerning to me.
Yes, we look into that. We actually even audit it, audit these accounts, you know, roughly every three years. So it's not as simple as them just turning it in and us accepting it.
All right, Commissioner Clemens?
You know, I think, Mr. Self, it might be worth the investments for us to look into outside auditors from a local level for that. Or at least put in our language when they apply, that you're subject to annual audits, just so that we're making sure that they understand that this is, you know, that they're not going to fly under the radar with it. I would really like to see something like that, that we could do an audit at any time, or an independent audit of the inventory.
Well, the law already gives the tax assessor a right to inquire into any tax issue, any of the issues that they assess.
I would like to see it on the paperwork of the application for exemption, that the county has a right to do that, if it's legal. So if you guys would just check into it and get back with me on whether that's something we can do.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, here and now, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. We have one motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll now move into our next County Attorney and County Manager item. Thank you, Mr. Self. Regarding the resolution requesting local legislation establishing the salary for our Henry County coroner.
So Chair and Board, this is a little bit of a unique item. The Georgia law that establishes salaries or that addresses salaries for coroners is a little antiquated. What the Georgia law basically says is that coroners are entitled to a per-call fee of $175. If there's no jury assembled, a coroner can actually assemble a jury to inquire into the cause of death. If there is a jury assembled, I think it's $250. There is then, in another portion of the code dealing with the county coroner, there is a chart for how much a county coroner's salary is. And that salary is a population-based salary, but it caps at a population of 30,000, I think, it's 30,000. So it doesn't address a metropolitan county like us with a population of 200 and some thousand people. And so we're stuck in a situation today where the coroner and the deputy coroner are receiving a per-call fee as their compensation. And we cannot convert them to a salary unless we have local legislation create the salary. And it's, this is the result of a really convoluted statute. And so what is presented to you today is a request to our local legislative delegation to submit to the General Assembly at the upcoming legislative session a local act that will establish salaries for the coroner and a call fee limitation for the deputy coroner. And County Manager will have to explain to you where these numbers are, why these numbers are where they are. But the annual salary for the coroner would be set at $65,000. The deputy coroner would continue to receive $175 per call, but it would be capped at $15,600 on an annual basis. And the deputy coroner would not be a full-time employee entitled to your benefits. So that's the proposal that's being made. And if you have questions about why those numbers are what they are, Ms. Matthews should be able to answer those.
All right, Ms. Matthews.
Well, and Patrick summed it up in terms of the salaries. I know we discussed this a couple of meetings ago. But wanted you all to be aware that this will not impact the budget which was approved by the board. The salaries that staff is recommending and the salaries being set for the deputy coroner will be in line with the funds that are already allocated within the department. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Did you discuss this with the coroner?
He is aware of it, yes, ma'am.
And there was no issues with it?
No, ma'am, he was fine with it.
Okay, other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Barnes?
So the max that the deputy coroner will make is $15,600 per year?
That is correct.
And to Ms. Clemens' question, whether the coroner is aware of it, a future coroner, at this coroner, the law allows them to opt out of salary and revert back to the per-call basis. And I'm not, I'm not sure we can exempt that. The law appears to give the coroner that right always to opt out of salary and instead receive a per-call. So, you know, I think that could change. You may have another coroner in some number of years who wants to get a per-call thing. And it appears that the law would allow that to happen. And I don't think we can change that law.
Okay, other questions or comments from the board? Here and now, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, the resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving to our County Manager's item regarding a resolution to approve a budget amendment for FY '18.
Yes, good morning, Chair and Board members. You have a resolution before you this morning to amend the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget. We do have what we call unallocated contingency funds. And I'm asking to have $18,800 transferred into the County Manager's technical account. The reason for the transfer is because we have had, over the last couple of months, a lot of constituent concerns and issues that have been raised. And we've got to do a better job of making sure that we're following up, not only at the staff level, but making sure that we're following up when it comes to you all as well. We've been in conversations with a company by the name of See Click Fix. And we've been very pleased with what they've been able to present to us. very pleased with what they've been able to present to us. The See Click Fix software is a work management, citizen engagement, and request management app that you can utilize from your phone. And I'll give you a perfect example. If you're out on the road, if you're on 155, and there's a pothole, as a citizen or even as a commissioner, you are able to immediately click on the app, take a picture, and immediately send it to staff here at the county. You will then be notified that we've received your request, and then you'll also have a tracking system which will tell you where we are in the process and who has been assigned to handling that request. Staff, along with myself, feel like this will be something very beneficial, not only to you all as commissioners, but to the residents as well, in terms of follow-up and making sure that we are providing a high level of service. So the funding for it, I do need to transfer that out of our contingency fund, so that we can go ahead and enter into an agreement with See Click Fix, and hopefully get this started by the first of the year. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, we've heard the presentation, and under, it's a question from Commissioner Wilson.
Sherry, how are we going to promote this to the public to get them educated to use the system? And if that, if it's going to cost us any funding for that, is it included in this price?
We will do our best to make sure that we're promoting it, but I think all of that is included within our total costs. We will charge our communications department with making sure that we do put it out on our social media face, Facebook page, but we will also need for you all to put it out on your social media pages as well. We will make sure that we also send it to our respective agencies, like our senior centers, and we'll make sure that we have that information posted. But we will do a lot of it internally and make sure that we do a press release and get that information out.
Okay, we had Commissioner Prince, and then we'll come to Commissioner Holmes.
Thank you, Sherry. I have used this app quite a bit, actually, and it's, it's really innovative. Some of the things you can do, you can see a problem, and when you do click that picture and you hit send, it actually gives GPS locations on the picture that you took. So if a citizen was to see a violation of some sort with, I use it for code violations and different things in different areas, you can take the picture, it instantly sends, and then you can track it. And what a wonderful app to have on your phone. And it is an app, is what it is. And as far as getting out, you know, how to use it and, you know, getting the citizens' knowledge about it, it's just going to take a little time, but it'll catch on pretty quick, because again, you know, we all have our cellphones on us all the time. And literally, I've got it on my phone already. It's just a click, you mean, you know, stop on the side of the road, click something, hit send. And I appreciate you bringing this. It's really going to help the citizens. It's going to help the citizens report things. It's going to help the commissioners report things. It's a great way, you know, because we only know what's going on when we're told. And this will help, instead of having to try to get somebody on the phone or something, you just, with an app, open up, click, send it, and then it tracks it. So I appreciate you bringing this. It's, it's a pretty neat little, little app.
Thank you. Commissioner Holmes?
Sherry, yeah, I already received these notifications, so I thought we already had this applicant, this app. So can you tell me where they're coming from?
Well, there are some jurisdictions that currently utilize it. The city of Stockbridge is one of those jurisdictions that actually already has See Click Fix. So depending on if you're in a particular jurisdiction, you can easily log into any jurisdiction, so long as you sign up. So I'm assuming maybe it's the city of Stockbridge, but I'm not sure. I know for the county, we have not executed the contract as of yet.
All right. Commissioner Barn, and then we'll come to Commissioner Clemmons.
Yes, Sherry, I just want to commend you for bringing this forward. I think this is really going to help us track things a lot better. I know things kind of get lost in the cracks a lot of times, and it's just going to be some documentation that we can keep up with. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clemmons?
I have a question in reference to droids or iPhones. Is it going to be compatible to all of those phones and what type of upgrades? You know, when you're changing your phones, how it's going to work for people? Seniors that still have flip phones, you know, is it going to be, is this going to operate for them as well? And the $18,000 that we pay now, when will we have to pay again? Will there be a continuous funding needed for this?
Yes, ma'am. In terms of the flip phones, I'm not sure that that app will work on the flip phone. So they will still, and, and this does not preclude anyone from still calling into the county. So we will still be available to receive any complaints and comments that come in, but it is my understanding that this app will be able to be utilized on any type of smartphone. So if you have a Droid, if you have the Apple product, then it can be utilized on both. And I've seen it used on both programs. In terms, in terms of the funding, it is something that we will have to budget for every year. And I will tell you, because we are unveiling it for this year, we want to see how it works first and make sure that we are being able to benefit from what we, what we're trying to do. So that's why we're only looking at a one-year contract at this point, and then we'll bring it back to the board if we feel that the product is actually working. I feel very confident about it. I've spoken with our counterparts in some respective jurisdictions, and they literally live by this app. It's, it's something that I'm sure that you all will benefit from as well. But what was most important is being able to see a dashboard where you can see where it is in the process. I get a number of phone calls from you all in terms of where are we on this project. I've also been told that we will be able to add a widget to the app where we can also track our capital projects. So when we start looking at our SPOSS projects, we'll be able to identify where those projects are and where they are in the process. So I think there's a lot of capabilities that, that, that we just aren't able to unveil at this point, but I think this is surely a good starting point.
So $18,000 for an app instead of an employee?
It will be $18,800 for an app, and it will allow us to have up to 20 users within the county. And so that gives us an opportunity for you all to be able to log in and then to have some of those departments, like our animal control, code enforcement, the building department, planning and zoning, the county manager's office, the ability to track it as well. I certainly don't think that the app replaces an employee, but that, that certainly, we still do want to be very customer service friendly. And so it's also very important that when someone does call, that someone is on the receiving end to receive that call.
Is there some type of way to track the data, like, how many people are using it? So when we're looking at it the next year before budget time, that we're able to say, okay, we've had this app for this amount of time, this is how many users we have, so that we can make sure that we're making a good decision on 18,000 for the next year?
Absolutely. And it also gives you the opportunity, if you want to report a pothole, and say, for example, we have a huge pothole and 15 different people see it. Once that person goes in, it will tell them, this has already been reported, you are reporting it for the 15th time. And so everybody is able to see that the reports are going out. But absolutely, we are able to track how many people are utilizing it, and that will be something that we will consider when we start budgeting for next year.
Okay. All right, other questions? Commissioner Barn, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions from the board? Here are none. The floor is now open for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now move into our public comment section, where we welcome all citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions which are not listed on the agenda. All persons wishing to speak during the public comments must sign in with the county clerk and complete the public comment speaker form prior to the beginning of the meeting to be recognized. We respect the First Amendment rights of each person who addresses the board and requests citizens to be respectful. We request any concerns about an individual board member be addressed with that commissioner, or any concerns about a county employee be addressed with the county manager. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of this board, staff, or general public will be interrupted by the chair or any member of the board for disorderly conduct as a warning. If the disorderly conduct continues, the chair or other board members will request a citizen to be excused from the meeting. At this time, we will begin the public comment section of this meeting and call upon the county clerk to recognize those wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners.
Chair, we only have one speaker tonight, and it, or today, and it is Mr. Bill Tony.
Okay, thank you.
Bill Tony, McDonough, Georgia.
Good morning.
Excuse me. I'd like to say thank you to all the police officers here, and, well, I was, okay. Well, I know, I've been up here advocating and lobbying for the police department for almost five years now. They need money, they need officers. I am glad to see that something is beginning to happen now. If y'all would take the next step with the water authority and get those two mills, you'd solve a lot more problems. They need the extra money, and they're going to need more. I do believe that they're more than 12 people short, or 14, I think she said. So that's my thought on that. And I will continue to lobby for the police department from here on out. Every meeting, if it need be, until everything's taken care of. Okay, last meeting, we had a little conflict between me and, we'll say, the board. And I brought out a picture that I felt like was appropriate, and you, and I wasn't given the opportunity to explain, you know, about a picture. Now, my explanation of that would have been, it wasn't a racial thing, it was a white, black, people-working thing. Now, I was, when I got up here, Ms. Clemmons, when we put the picture up, she took off. I thought I might have upset her. And after meeting, I went to her, and I said, did I say or do anything that would upset you? You left real quick. She said, no, Bill, me and you are okay. I had to go to the bathroom. So if anybody was here and they saw her get up and take off, that was a bathroom break. Now, I was treated, I think, very, very unfairly by the chair. And I have been jumped in the parking lot. I have been, I've had Mr. Barn jump me out here in the, in the lobby. I've had my window shot out. I've had a number of things done. I've had you or the board to move the public comment to the back of the meeting. We've had y'all to do away with the 15 minutes. And last meeting, I really feel like you owe me an apology for the way that you treated me, and you wouldn't even let me say a word. You know, you just had two police officers to, to sit me down. So I tell you what, I think I'm a pretty patient person. You know, I try to be anyway, and I try to be respectful of everybody. But with your First Amendment, there's a lot that goes with it. Well, whether I say anything you like or dislike. Now, you'd like for me to get up here and praise y'all and give that happy-slappy and all that, you know, but I can't do it, because I feel like you're, you're, you're falling short on your job. You want to take credit for everything that's done, that's really just happened anyway, and it's just not fair. You sit there and you make, and you, y'all make decisions over millions and millions of dollars and actually thousands and thousands of lives every meeting. Now, I, I will get up here and I'll show every respect I can for you, but I'm expecting, and I would like to get an apology from Ms. Wood for the way that she treated me last meeting. Now, I don't like to, the thought of going to court and doing things like that, I don't like. I believe in everybody being open, honest, and transparent, and I expect you to be the same way. If you don't like me, that's okay. I don't, it doesn't bother me. But don't treat me like a third-class citizen, that you can just, you know, have these gentlemen come up and carry me back to my seat over something, a picture that's in a federal building. And it was like, I was just going to prove the point to where you had just working people, not, not necessarily one race. And I think Ms. Clemmons' thing over at Nash Farm with, with that going on, I wanted to clarify a lot of things that way. And I hope, you know, Ms. Clemmons, you, you know, she said that...
Please address the board. Thank you.
She said that, you know, me and her are okay, and I, I accept that. You know, me and her are okay. And I don't really think me and you are okay, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Okay, that was our last public comment for this evening. We will now move into our next item regarding the approval of minutes for our November 14th call meeting, and also our November 21st Regular B Board of Commissioners meeting. Now called for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Are there any discussions regarding the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We will now move into the commissioner and chair comments. Are there any commissioners that would like to make any comments? Commissioner Clemmons?
I would just like to commend our chair for how you handle public comments. I think that we need to make sure that there are no personal impertinence or slanderous profanity of any type, or anything that divides this community when it comes to things that are very personal. And I would just like to commend you and let you know that I appreciate how you handle public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the board?
I will agree with Ms. Clemmons.
Thank you.
I also agree. Commissioner Clemmons, another comment that I have is, if you notice around Henry County, we've got a lot of paving work going on and a lot of new construction. So we're moving this county forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, if you...
Yeah, I would just like to say, guys, thank you to the staff for the fill-the-bus that we've been doing. We have added a component to fill the bus. I know that Connecting Henry has received calls and names from our counselors in the schools. Last year, I participated in the community toy drive, and there were still families that were left out. So this year, we decided that we would add on an extra component of that. So on Saturday, we've reached out to all of our celebrities and former ballplayers in Henry County and asked them to come out and participate with us getting more toys to make sure that all of our communities are touched. I know that the defects office still has a list. Our juvenile justice system still had a list, and those people were not able to get on the list that Connecting Henry had. So that if you know anyone who needs, is still in need, I think, Sherry, when we called Susan Crumley, she wasn't taken anymore. So we need a point of contact that people can contact and call. And if all of the commissioners would post that if you have people in your district that needs toys for Christmas, then we will have a bus for you guys. We'll split the toys and make sure that everybody gets something.
All right, very good. All right, in my comments, you know, this has been an amazing journey this year. I, first of all, want to commend our county management team. I want to commend our staff. I know this has been a great year of a lot of things that we've pushed you for, especially to help bring us into the 21st century, to, you know, whatever can we do to bring efficiencies and keep our employees motivated. There's been a lot of things that you do deserve the credit for. I do want to say thank you to the citizens that have come forth and expressed their comments, both in this meeting and online, and even when we've been out and about in this community. And so I do appreciate that we're here to serve our citizens here in this community. We've got lots of opportunity, and as we've heard today even, we've got to continue to think proactively into the future. And I just want to say thank you as well to our board. As I've said from the very beginning, I think we are unique in our differences, but yet and still, I see great talent that we each bring to the table. And I just, again, appreciate the honor to work with you this year and look forward to, again, next year into 2018. And then again, to everyone who may be out there, we're in a time now for our country, for our state, and even for our county, our own communities and our homes. And yes, this is our last Board of Commissioners meeting for this year. And I just ask that we do continue just the thought of kindness and respect that we have for each other. Henry County is comprised of a lot of great people, and yes, we are changing. So I just encourage us, get to know somebody that you don't know. And again, look for the opportunities for us here in Henry County to be a great positive example for the rest of the world about how we can get along and have our differences and yet be respectful to each other as well. So again, I just say Merry Christmas to those that are out there, a Happy New Year. And again, appreciate the teamwork, as I know our county manager and county management team has implemented what we call a Team Henry focus, and so let's continue the teamwork and continue what we've been doing already. So I say thank you to each of you board members for serving with you. So at this time, we'll move into our county manager's comments.
I'm going to approach the podium, because this is our final meeting of the year. So before I get started, I do have Dante Gibbs that's going to come up and just give the board a update on a notice of an annexation. Then I have some comments that I'd like to make as well. make as well.
Good morning, Chair Wood and Commissioners. This is just for informational purposes, the city of McDonough sent and actually delivered a notice of annexation to us for a property located at 384 Russell Road. It's forty point nine two plus or minus acres, and after review, staff has determined that this property does meet the contingency requirements of the annexation laws, and we have no objection. And so with respect to the zoning, the city of McDonough, they do intend to zone the property to a comparable zoning to our zoning of the property, which is currently RA, and their zoning will be RA 200, which is the same designation as we have residential agricultural. So that's just for your information.
Thank you.
About eight months ago, I told the staff that Henry County was going to be the most admired place to live, work, and play, and as you all can see from this morning's agenda, and I think one of the commissioners mentioned it, Commissioner Barn, there's a lot going on in the county and a lot of things that we need to be excited about. The ERP system is huge for the county, the See Click Fix is huge for the county, Northola Park finally moving forward is huge for the county, and then just all of the other things that are going on in our county, and I certainly can't stand here and take credit for everything, I have to give that credit to our awesome staff, but also to our Board of Commissioners who has not only supported me and Brad through our transition, but our staff as well. So I first off want to say thank you all for your support and certainly looking forward to what 2018 has to bring. Before I get started, I do have a couple of more comments, but I do want to take this opportunity to introduce our executive director, Mr. Leonard Sledge, with the Development Authority. He's been with us this entire morning, and I would be remiss if I didn't give him an opportunity to come forward and just introduce himself to the board. Mr. Sledge and I had a brief meeting on yesterday, and I will tell you, I am excited that he is part of Team Henry. He comes with a wealth of knowledge, and he is ready to take this county to a higher level in collaboration, not only with the county manager's office, but also with our Board of Commissioners. So I do want to give Mr. Sledge an opportunity to speak, and then I have a couple of more comments.
Thank you, Sherry. Madam Chair, lady and gentleman on the Board of Commissioners, good morning, my name is Leonard Sledge, and it is an absolute privilege and honor to serve the citizens of Henry County as the executive director of the Henry County Development Authority. I'm looking forward to working alongside each of you, the county staff, and with the Development Authority, just to help usher in a greater level of economic prosperity here in the county. There are a lot of tremendous assets here, a lot of successes that we can all continue to celebrate, and also continue to make Henry County a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you very much, and it is an honor to be here with you.
All right, and we welcome you, welcome, congratulations.
Thank you.
So Commissioner Clemmons did mention it, that we are filling the bus and we're almost winding down. On Thursday and Friday of this week, we will officially open our community toy shop, and it is truly a winter wonderland. This year, we were not successful in securing a warehouse space, but we did not allow that to stop us from serving those that are in most need here in Henry County. I do want to take an opportunity to, and I know I'm going to forget people, but there's some key individuals that have just been instrumental in pulling this off, and I will start with our county clerk. I will tell you, she has a vision of no other, and so if you have not had an opportunity to go over to our community toy shop, which is at our emergency operations center, please take the time to just stop by and see what her, along with her staff, or her, along with her committee, what they've been able to accomplish. It is beyond beautiful. This year, we are serving, as of Sunday, more than nine hundred and thirty-one students in our school system. That's four hundred and fifty-plus families, and Commissioner Clemmons has already mentioned, we still have more in need, and it is our goal to make sure that we service all those that are in need. We want to clear the toy house out and make sure that next year we start over, so I do appreciate the celebrity basketball, fill-the-bus that Commissioner Clemmons is spearheading, and then also appreciate all of the support that all of you all have provided to make sure that we are able to pull this off. So again, it opens on Thursday, beginning at nine AM, please feel free to drop by, we're always looking for helpers to assist, so I do want to put that out for the board. But I also want to thank the entire team. I know Stephanie has been in charge of the directions, but we have so many people that work behind the scenes. Don Ash and his entire staff opened up their EEOC facility for us to do this, and I want you all to know that if we were to have an emergency, we do have a second plan in place, so just wanted you all to be aware of that as well, and publicly wanted to thank the entire staff for that. Also wanted to update the board, because I know a number of you all are wondering, where are we in our chief of police search, and so I do want to publicly tell you all that we did close the application period on last Friday, and I've charged our HR department with providing a list of qualified applicants to the county manager's office for myself and Mr. Johnson to start the review process by Monday. I did commit to this board that we would have a new chief in place by January, and so I'm still pressing for it to make sure that that happens. But I think I also want to take the time to just say, our police department has come a long way, and I think that speaks volumes to the current leadership, that speaks volumes to the culture that has changed over the last six to seven months, and I will tell you, I'm proud of the officers that we're working with now. I don't think it's any secret that many, 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 many months ago, we had some issues with in our police department, and I will tell you, under the sheriff and under Deputy Chief Ammerman, I have seen a shift in that department, and I do want to publicly thank them for their hard work and for making sure that they protect us every single day, so I do want to thank them as well. And then finally, if you all will notice, we have a couple of people that have joined us behind our, I call it our jurors' corner, we have Run Burkhalter, who was recently promoted to our Public Works Director. Run will continue to handle all of the day-to-day operations, not only for our DOT department, but for our stormwater department as well. Run is really excited about it, he's already given myself and Brad some ideas in terms of solving some of the problems that we've had thus far, project management, and making sure that when we're going out and our staff is actually doing paving, that we're doing it correctly. So bear with us for a couple of months, and we're going to certainly have some options available for the board, so just give us some time on that. You saw Dante came up, Dante was recently promoted to our Planning and Economic Development Director. In addition to continuing to serve as our Planning and Zoning Director, Dante will be the liaison between our Building and Plan Review, Planning and Zoning, CDBG, and GIS Departments. And then I think you all know Rod Gray, who's been promoted or put into an interim position as our Financial Services Director. Rod will continue to operate our Purchasing Department, but will also serve as the key person for our Finance Department until a final appointment is made. So a lot of great things are going on, and I personally cannot thank you all enough, and personally cannot thank Brad Johnson enough, one, for putting up with me as the county manager, but two, for being a voice of wisdom when we've had to make some tough decisions. Again, I'm really excited about what 2018 is going to bring, and I'm really excited about being your county manager and being a part of this Board of Commissioners. That is my final comment. Thank you all, and I wish you all a very, very Merry Christmas.
Well, we thank you, Sherry, and we appreciate all of the work between you and your staff as well. Thank you. Okay, we're now moving to our upcoming meetings and events. Again, to note that there will be no regular meetings scheduled for the third Tuesday of December in 2017 due to the holiday, and then the January third meeting at nine AM is a regular Board of Commissioners meeting, but note that it's been moved to that Wednesday due to the holiday. And then there will be a regular Board of Commissioners meeting on January the sixteenth at six thirty PM. Again, there will be no executive session today, so we're now move for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you all.